Gentlemen, we have quorum. So I am going to suggest we get started. Thank you all for being responsive to our timeline. We are only a couple of moments late. And I am going to hand over the beginning of the session to Mr. Smith and Ms. Burden to set the tone, and then we will continue on with our conversation.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Corbett Sanders. We're here today to have a conversation, to bring the board back up to speed after Dr. Brabran's presentation of his budget, to talk about possible amendments to the budget, and to talk about our work as a school system with some of the requests that have come in, some of the budget questions that have come in, and some additional things that we would like the board to be aware of as we work through this initial part of the budget process and prepare for our May final budget vote. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Burden and Ms. Wigginton.
Good afternoon. First, we're just gonna do like a mini review because the superintendent proposed the budget back on January 13th. So this is just a quick review of that. So the FY '23 proposed budget totals $3.3 billion, and that is a net decrease in the operating fund of $78 million, or about 2.3%. And that's due to a technical adjustment to remove the ESER funds that were fully budgeted in fiscal '22. And so, of course, they have to come out in fiscal '23, although there will be significant funds because it's a three-year plan that will be carried forward at year-end from fiscal '22 back into '23, which is what we do with all grants. The budget, proposed budget focuses on compensation, investments in opportunity and access, and critical operational needs. And we're requesting an additional $112.6 million from the county to help sustain us as a premier school division. So I'll quickly go over the details. The market scale adjustment is at 4%. Each 1% of salary increase is $25 million, so the total cost of that is $100 million. Step increases for eligible employees average about 2.68% at a cost of $55 million. Health benefits or premium rates are going up slightly at 2.3% for an employer, increase of $8 million. Recurring substitute and recurring transportation compensation. Recall that last fall, we did some out-of-cycle changes to those salary schedules, and we have to move them into fiscal '23. The two combined are a cost of about $7.7 million. We also included a placeholder at the last work session. Sean McDonald provided the market study on family liaisons and bus and transportation that was requested by the school board, and so we included a placeholder to be able to address any changes that would be desired in there. County life insurance has a slight rate decrease for air employees that are on FCERS retirement plans, and then base savings, which is just routine turnover adjustments to align with fiscal '22. So the compensation package totals $150.8 million. There are also a number of required adjustments. Enrollment, of course, being the largest. We are expecting about 11,000 less students than were assumed in the fiscal '22 approved budget. And so that results in a savings of $88 million. We have baseline adjustment of $17.8 million, and that are, that represents the items that were ESER-funded in fiscal '22. It's about 62 positions that we're putting in the fiscal '23 budget that were funded previously with one-time funds. The staffing reserve, recall at the end of fiscal '22, we reduced that line item by 33 positions. And so we're restoring those, plus an additional 50 positions in case we have significant enrollment fluctuations in the fall. We have a slight increase in transfer to other funds, and again, the one-time ESER funding being removed from the budget, which is a technical adjustment of negative 272. So the required adjustments actually end up with a total of a negative $311 million. The third category is opportunity and access. We have three days built into the budget for less-than-12-month employees at $32 million. The elementary special ed teacher at $14.7 million. A placeholder to be able to address any general assembly actions still to come, and perhaps some of the Virginia Board of Ed proposals that they have put forward for staffing changes. So we have $10 million placeholder for that. Phase two of a three-year plan to increase the number of ESAL teachers. We're in the second year of that, and it's 50 additional positions. The advanced academic placement is also in phase two of a three-year plan, and that will provide 20 elementary AARTs, five middle school, and one twice-exceptional liaison between special ed and AAP. The special education services program is under review currently, and so there's a placeholder for that as well, for $2 million. Language and literacy, that's four literacy resource teachers, four ESALs and instructional coaches at a cost of a little less than $1 million. The innovation project at Lewis High School is for specialized programs. And then the next four positions, it's one position each. It's an accessibility specialist for digital learning compliance, a behavior intervention support, office, a hearings office, social worker who will work with families that are involved in hearings, and then administrative support to the equity director. And the opportunity and access totals $68.7 million. And then we have the critical operational support. The assistant principal formula enhancement, we added a needs-based component, and also a minimum of four at high schools. That results in 52 additional positions at a cost of $8.4 million. We also have assumed that the high school AP contracts will be 12-month contracts to help with summer administration and planning. That's about a little under $1 million. A .5 flexible position at the middle schools is $1.7 million. And then human resources staffing, you know, as you all know, the, the work in the human resources department has just been staggering during the pandemic. And so this will provide for nine positions in the areas of recruitment, recruitment for subs, benefits, compensation specialist, ADA, and all need additional support. That's $1.4 million. Five, the technology infrastructure is a multi-year, multimillion-dollar plan to replace the legacy systems that do all of our HR work and our payroll. It's .4 million this year, but in, in the coming years, that, that number will go up. Cybersecurity, we want to strengthen our, our critical cyber data for data privacy, security, security architecture. That's five positions. The records office, three positions to address the, the increase in FOIA requests, facilities planning, two positions for data analysis and space utilization, and then one position to support labor relations costing in the budget office. And that total, critical operational support is 13.6 with a total overall of minus $78 million. Then the next page basically just shows the revenue again. It does include a county transfer increase of $112.6 million. Sales tax and state aid is expected to increase based on the governor's introduced budget from back on December 16th of $87.9 million. Again, you see the federal funding and the technical adjustment to remove the ESER funds, both ESER II and III combined, and then a slight decrease in the beginning balance and other revenue. I know that we're going to talk about budget amendments later this afternoon. You know, if you need assistance with language or costing, you know, we need to receive those by next Monday, and we will post any budget amendments to board docs on Friday, February 18th, in anticipation of the discussion at the regular school board meeting the following week. And we also have some ongoing budget work in the areas of professional development and planning time for elementary schools, and continued collaboration with the county on environmental issues, early childhood assessment and testing, and transportation compensation. Dr. Brabran may want to speak to those more specifically.
I just want to make a quick comment on this. I know we're at the, this first phase of the budget, right? We still have a long way to go before adoption in May, and we're certainly going to listen to the board today as an administration. I want you to know that there's a part of me, I'd love to bring you amendments today, but I feel good about the budget I proposed. And I know many of you want to look at amendments. And again, ultimately, we'll listen, the board will make the decisions. These are four areas where we still want to do a little bit more work. We're not ready today for primetime. I'm not even sure we'll be ready when you all vote on the advertised budget, but we certainly can work with you in the months ahead before you vote in May on the approved budget. One is the professional development and planning time for elementary schools. This is an equity issue that's been well over a decade old. We think we know how we can take some, some dollars that is already aligned for professional development in the budget and target it at elementary schools using an innovation out of ESER around monitors to really provide that additional planning time for teachers. I don't have the final plan, but could bring it to you over the next several weeks. And I think it would be a major, major moment for the, for the board, and frankly, something I'd love to be able to do as a final, as a final piece of the strategic work we've been trying to do long-term to solve local school-based problems that require system intervention. The second area is, I know the county, I've talked with Brian Hill, in fact, just this morning about environmental issues. I know Carl and Elaine have been working on that, and the whole board has wholeheartedly supported working with the county on environmental issues. That some additional collaboration may need to happen in terms of support to really make sure we're putting infrastructure in place to achieve these goals over the next five to 10 years. We're still very sparsely staffed. Brian is adding some positions in the county around JET, and we would like to at least take a look at that with Jeff and Marty a little bit more. But again, we just don't have that work all done today for your review. I just want to be honest, too. I know the board did receive from a stakeholder group about early childhood assessment and testing. I want to be clear, so the board knows, I had everyone on the leadership team this fall do their own needs assessment and had Lee collect that information before I prepared my budget. That doesn't mean sometimes that some voices don't get out there, but I also want to be sure as we move forward that we're really looking at what are real needs. Of course, anybody is always going to be welcome to reach out to you and have their comments on the budget, but I do want you to know that I engaged every member of the leadership team, our associations around budget needs, and I tried to bring the best budget. This is an area, though, Dr. Boyd, you may have seen an email she sent to you saying she is going back to talk with that team in more detail. And then finally, that fourth bullet, transportation, you all certainly heard a lot about that. You've done a lot of work as a board back at the beginning of the year, but I know you got an update from Mr. McDonald and Mr. Smith just recently. We are forming a task force, a work group, to look at some of these final pieces of transportation compensation. It won't be ready in the next day or week before advertised, but we would like to have an opportunity to bring that to you before May in your final vote. And then the last thing I'd say, one of the things in the budget is that, that placeholder for all of the state decisions, again, bills are flying by every day, as you know, right now, on a variety of different topics. So I'm really not in a position yet in some places to be, as you all have your discussion, I don't want you to think I'm not enthusiastic about some of the amendments and discussions that are coming. I just don't know yet where we'll have it. So whether you end up doing an amendment or a follow-on or something, I wanted to give you here are four, in a sense, staff follow-ons that we want to kind of look at between now and May, and we'll obviously do whatever you prefer with amendment or follow-ons for the advertised. Thank you, and we look forward to listening to your conversation this afternoon.
So if I can just set the tone for the rest of the afternoon. And thank you very much, Dr. Brabran, for that introduction, because I think it really is imperative on all of us. We heard this morning about having to be more strategic and intentional in how we utilize our resources. We also know that we are looking at a lot of unknowns going forward, especially in the context of what we're going to see coming from the state. The budget numbers that are put in this initial budget are based on a concept that the recommendations of the previous governor would be honored. What is not in there is, does not reflect on some of the conversations that are going on at the state level, that would not necessarily see all of the funding that we had hoped coming to us. So I'm going to encourage you, each of us, to look at this as a two, as the two-part process that it is. One, which is that we do have to adopt an advertised budget. That is the signal to the community that we are being responsible within the framework of what we can expect from both the state and local, our state and local funders. And so, and then the second piece is, once we have more clarity as to where we are financially with our funders, then we will be able to get out our stubby pencils and readjust funding. And so in looking at between now and the board meeting on the 24th, what I would encourage is that we look at what are the follow-on motions that we may want to give direction to the superintendent to come back with plans and processes rather than fixed budget, unless you have a budget-neutral recommendation, which says, okay, I want to take this many, this many dollars from this resource and put it into this resource. But I would say, I would encourage you to recognize that the superintendent listened to us very intently this past fall, between our, starting the process with the budget resolution, clearly defining what our priorities are, and going through all of the follow-on motions that we've had in the past two years to make sure that they're reflected in this initial proposal. And so I'm, I'm just trying to set the tone that we know that we are going, we are not going to have a whole lot of flexibility in the bottom-line ask. So that's where I, I hope you all will be patient with this process. And what I'd like to see is that we actually add to that slide on the four initiatives that the superintendent is looking at and say, okay, and these are some additional things that we think you need to look at. And I know that some people put things forward as a, oh, I'm going to do this as an amendment without any dollars associated with it and without an offsetting recommendation. So if we can just really look at focusing our ask on what we need the superintendent to evaluate and come back with his best recommendations. Okay? Over from bef, I think that might be a ghost. And so we will have Ms. Omeish, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, and then Ms. Cohen.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see yours. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, as always, Dr. Brabran, Mr. Smith, Ms. Burden, Ms. Wigginton, for your work. I, I do think overall to Ms. Corbett Sanders' sentiment that we're in a good place. I have a couple of things that I just want to elevate. I think as I continue to just think of, you know, student achievement, student mental health, I know we prioritize that through ESER. I did want to see if, if perhaps there's any space here that I may not be seeing for, whether it's a placeholder or potential use for the telemental health work we've been talking about that I know we spoke to, or where that might live, should that come to fruition.
Yeah, and Dr. Presidio, I know is here, but I'm not sure Dr. Boyd is. She has been engaging some of our telehealth folks around some additional conversation. We've started to use them in a, in a limited form. And I think that's one of the things I would do is I'd add to maybe that list of four or five things. And, and again, ultimately, it's what the board has, you want to do it, that we could come back and talk about, does she have existing resources to convert some of the health services we're providing and do it in an electronic fashion, or it doesn't require additional dollars? But I can figure that out with Dr. Boyd and Dr. Presidio and let you guys know soon.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that's reflected, bullet five on, on that slide. No, but I appreciate that. And, and perhaps this is a point of reflection, too, as we look at how we're spending ESER, continuing with, I feel so strongly that those tutoring hours are, we're going to make the difference for some of these kids. Which brings me to a point, how will the research we just reviewed from the study inform this moving forward? I, I don't know what's reflected, what's not, are we, is that a sixth bullet point?
Well, there are a couple of things there, I'd say. One is something that Dave said that just left me, which is, what, use this moment that we're in, that we all want to be out of, to think about what you're going to innovate into differently. So one of the things that I've had as that bullet is this notion of monitors that we've used through the pandemic. Now, we're looking at a proposal to get the additional monitors that can solve a longtime structural issue with elementary planning time and equity of their planning time and professional development to that of middle and high by the use of the monitor role. So there's an example. I, I, I think, I think that's an example, and I think there's more things like that that we are going to continue to look at as we come out of this. One thing I want to say, because you made a reference to it, and this is a preview for coming forward, tutoring is one of the things that's getting national attention. We've just about finished our RFP for our outside vendor for tutoring, right? In addition to the tutoring we have with our own personnel. But we need to be honest that even nationally, the supply of tutors has been small. We, we, we didn't have, I would love to say that we had hundreds of tutors, thousands of tutors on day one. That's just work that's getting started. But that may be an innovation that's come out of the pandemic that we want to start to have multi-year and maybe use some ESER funds. I think Mr. Smith referenced it, or Ms. Burden did, that we're actually trying to work to lengthen the time from September 30th, 2024, to have a little bit more time if these things work. I think more individualized learning is going to come out of this, and I think as you're seeing a little bit as we extended the calendar a little bit, but we're going to be talking soon, I'll be sharing with you all soon our final plans for summer school, that we're really going to start to have to think about learning. Many of our kids need to be learning all year round, and we're going to need to become more dynamic about what the school year is and isn't in terms of learning. So those are just a couple of things.
And when you say that's coming, the individualized learning piece, can you just give a little bit of a concrete idea?
Well, what I'm talking about specifically, and Dr. Presidio may have a little bit more, is we, we have schools with plans that are intensive around tutoring, either for faculty at the school or bringing in outside tutoring. I think that is going to become a bigger part of our strategies as we move forward to really speed up or accelerate where there's been learning loss or learning gaps or unfinished learning in a way that we've never, we've always had tutoring, but never at the scale that I think we're really engaging in this year, or that we're about to engage in this year.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that, that's the kind of scale that I'm thinking, you know, the direction we want to head in. So I'll be having some follow-up conversations with Dr. Presidio. So that's in terms of mental health and student achievement. I did just want to make sure the timeline that was outlined for bringing forward amendments, et cetera, that that would be, that, that excludes the items that we were saying are, we're going to continue follow-up on, right? So whether that's the bus drivers, the early intervention programs, et cetera.
Correct. And actually, what we're encouraging is not to have full-up budget amendments, but rather follow-on motions to direct the conversation between now and when we adopt our full budget in May, because what we have to provide to the board of supervisors is the bottom-line ask.
It's not my place to decide. It's the budget chair and vice chair. But a couple of years ago, I know, we had an omnibus, in a sense, follow-on, right? That looks at these things, and then we can bring that to you by May and do our best to say, here's what we know, here's how everything fell out with the general assembly, with the final budget, with the board of supervisors. Here were things that were established as areas of additional interest and concern. What can we do within the budget parameters? Or at least start to talk about a multi-year. Can it be at year-end? Can it be in the next year's budget? So an omnibus follow-on would be, from probably the administration's point of view, the best way to go and not fight out now whose amendment is more important than another until we really, you know, we have the budget, we know what the parameter is. It's, this is a good news budget, as many board members have said, and we want to, we want to keep that momentum going, but also acknowledge there's still a few things to like tie up, and we'd be in a better position to tie that up over the next couple of months than the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, no doubt, and I would certainly support that process. I think that's where we want to all land, absolutely. The other thing I wanted to just mention, I know when we heard in the public hearing, there were those pieces that you all elevated. There were a couple of other pieces, so this brings me back always to what's our budget needs assessment process? I appreciated you outlining that you spoke with leadership team, each of them brought plans. As a board, I think we collectively have to continue thinking about this. We need to put in place a process, just like we do every year, you know, we bring it back to, the county sees it, they come back to us, et cetera. We need a part of that in advance to be a needs-based or a needs assessment that keeps in mind an equitable process, because we, we can't have this be what's people, you know, mention, or what comes up, or what a board member thinks is important. So I appreciate the, the beginnings of that with our board leadership and the budget, and hopefully, we can continue those conversations in the years ahead. Finally, I did want to just put in a little bit of a plug, not to add too many things to that slide, but I appreciated seeing language and literacy. I think that's a collective priority. But beyond that, just in terms of these eight special, or, you know, four coaches, four specialists, translation services. I think this is a place we continue to be very short, you know, in terms of what families are able to access, and given the extent to the population that we have that doesn't speak English as a first language. So I don't even know where we begin to have the conversation on student achievement when families are not even able to understand or engage with the school. So I just wanted to put that plug, and that's my time. So thank you.
So, Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. I agree, this is still a good news budget. I do want to note that it's difficult for us to offer anything with offsets or dollar figures because we don't, staff has been inundated with questions from colleagues. So most of us do not yet have answers to dollar figures for our amendments. I think there are four answers thus far for budget questions. So I think most of us will be able to judge our ability to prioritize and determine whether we want to move forward with something this year or in the future, once we get those responses back. To that end, do we, can, somebody mentioned a deadline for follow-on motions and amendments. What, what date was that?
The 18th is when they will be posted, and Monday is the last day for them. However, what I'm hoping to-
Coming Monday?
Yes. A, a week from Mon, a week from-
Yeah. Yeah, you just need to get them to me by Monday if they need-
That's right.
If you need help with the language or you need costing. And you're right, Mr. Frisch, we have a total of 25 budget questions, and four have been answered. Seventeen of them are still in development. Most of those, I think, came in last week. And then we have four that are in the approval routing, so we're getting those done as quickly as we can.
And Mr. Frisch, one of your big questions that you posed to the board yesterday, which I hope you're going to bring up today, is regarding the IA pay. And what I would hope, because it's a bigger, if you can raise that question for the table, then I think we should figure out how to go forward. And it was both you and Ms. Cohen.
Well, I know we're not, I know that the two of us are not the only ones, and I, I will get to some of those, I think, in a moment. I do want to say that I'm encouraged by the ongoing budget work. As far as I can see, the work around the environmental issues and the joint environmental task force goals, that would include safe routes to school, that would include the JET recommendations, that would include outdoor learning spaces, which several colleagues have put in budget requests on and our budget questions on. So I, I would have, I think we'd have robust support for that. There are, of course, other things that I'm interested in. Ms. Cohen and I have been talking about a living wage for our instructional assistants. But again, without dollar figures for these asks, it's difficult to figure out how they might fit in as we have these conversations. I think the, on a macro sense, and then I'll finish, every year we do the budget, we are presented with, board members only focus on the new money. That's what you should play with. And that leaves so much untouched. And I'm not saying that it deserves to be touched or anything. I'm just saying, we don't ever really have a discussion about it. It's just assumed that it's going to be carried forward. It's just assumed that it's going to be carried forward. I think in the future, what might be helpful would be, if the board has other things that they want to fund, we kind of pass like a resolution saying, here are the other things that we'd like to fund. Superintendent, tell us what would have to be sacrificed. If, if, if we told you we want to fund these things, what would you cut? And then we can make an educated guess, or an educated deliberation about what we want to fund. And we would not only be looking at new money, because in those years when there is no new money, it's not that nothing needs to change. So I would just put that out there as well. At some point, this is the third budget I've been a part of, or fourth, if you count the two that we did the first on the board, I would really like for us to have a robust conversation about how we're going to impact the program budget, which is never really a part of these deliberations.
So, Mr. Fresh, that was precisely why we wanted to start earlier in the year with a resolution. And I think you, you tee up the most important piece, which is, how do we look at where else, where can we pull back? And we've had some of those conversations with the, as Budget Chair and Vice Chair with budget staff. It might be helpful to talk about what you all, what the staff does, the operating teams do every year about pulling back and repurposing money. It's probably not as robust as you would like to see it, or all of us would like to see it, but maybe that would be helpful if they could talk about that?
I think it's helpful. I mean, that's basically the response we talk about every year, is what is pulled back and how it's, you know, reallocated. And it's not much, and it doesn't get to the point of us having a real conversation about, okay, if the board wanted these five other things to get funded, what would the superintendent have to do to fund those things? That's where real rubber hits the road in that conversation. And as to the resolution, which I think was a great way to start the budget process, I don't really think that it does, you know, the public's engagement on the budget didn't come until much later, right, weeks later. So the process is ongoing, and I don't think that the resolution that we passed should be like the, the seal on anything that's reasonable to discuss, because things obviously change in a matter of months.
Okay. Ms. Burden, did you want to respond?
Well, I, I would, I guess, like to point out that, you know, the schools budgets, which, you know, 93% of our staffing is school-based. The majority of that funding is built from a zero base every year, when we recalculate all of the staffing based on the staffing standards. So we're not necessarily just adding on, it is a zero, a zero-based calculation where we start over every year. And the departments, as far as repurposing goes, they address that when they are developing their baseline budgets. And they will, they will, you know, move funds around as, as they see fit, and take a look at things that we're doing that maybe we shouldn't, you know, we don't want to do anymore, and what do we need to be doing instead? And they go ahead and make those changes in their baseline budgets for each department.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I'm happy to follow two points that were just shared, and I want to articulate that, because this is what I shared in my budget two-by-two meeting. It's what I shared in that very early work session, which is, how can we have a sense of what recommendations staff is providing when they are reviewing the existing budget, not the new ask? So I, I, I've said this a number of times, and I'm glad to hear Mr. Fresh say it. And I'm glad to hear from what Ms. Burden is saying, it's going on, but how can we have it be more transparent for this board to observe and to also provide input to that part of the work?
Yeah, it's largely invisible to, to you all. There's, there's no doubt about that, because each department head is making their own decisions about what their budget needs are. But that's something that we can look at. I mean, we do have a, a pretty streamlined budget development process. So we'll look at how we could include that as part of the budget development.
I think that will be very important, because again, we continue to circle the same drain. And if the work is happening, it's just a matter of putting together a process to make it obvious and transparent to all of us, then let's just go ahead and close that gap. So I, please, Budget Chair and Vice Chair, if you can work with staff to make sure that that can be included, even a truncated version with this budget, because we don't vote on this until May. And if that works, has already been done, great. Next year, we could have a more robust conversation with those department leaders as they're making those decisions. The other piece that I am going to share, it's what I shared last time, and also Ms. Omes just talked about this, as we are getting into needs-based budget, sometimes I struggle with finding the fine points on how we are determining those budgets. You know, the analogy that I use all the time is, we put braces on everyone. I, I don't want us to put braces on everyone, because we have to be more strategic, more intentional, as was outlined earlier. And one of the points that I would love some additional guidance and responses to, as I shared with you, Dr. Brabran, one of my concerns is that the Principals of Mason District, there is a high level of turnover, because the work is that much more challenging. Before you even get to the instruction, there's all of the stuff that is presented in high-poverty schools, high ELL schools. There's all of that stuff that our administration have to, have to wade through before they can get to the business of instruction. So I really wanted to be sure that we were addressing that in the administrative staffing, because I think we've made some inroads with the, with the teacher staffing. And so I was glad to see it here, but I am not getting a full understanding with the items that are posted in pages 20 and 50 of the budget facts. I see the formula, which is 20%, and I think I said last time, 20% versus a school that is 80%? Those are two very different experiences. And I'm not discounting the opportunity to provide support for those schools with 20% FRM, but how are we engaging with those schools that are 80, 90, 93, 97% FRM? I'd like to get a finer point on the data that's on page 50.
If I could just clarify the, the formula, Dr. Anderson. By using an example of a school, elementary school, that has 500 students with 50% FRM, the formula is taking one-half of that FRM and adding that to the student enrollment. So in that example, a 500-student school would be treated as if they had 750 kids, okay? So half of that is 250. And based on the formula we're recommending for the elementary school, if you have 750, you would get two APs. So the fact sheet you were referring to is, is showing kind of the growth or where we were able to maintain. So there is an enrollment component. And as you are aware, there are some schools that lost enrollment. So if you are less than 20%, your, your, your points, if you will, is equal to your enrollment. So if you were a school that grew to 750, you would still get two APs. So it's a combination of enrollment as well as FRM, but your, your, your enrollment is weighted higher if you have higher FRM, starting at 20%, and thus would get additional APs. In the formula for elementary schools, you could get as much as three APs, depending on those two factors.
So I, I appreciate not wanting for people to be rocked during, you know, this time, but I also have questions about, I think there are seven schools here that are saved due to enrollment decline. Is that just for the next year, or is that in perpetuity? Because when we, we have to make some hard decisions here.
So it would, this, this, the saved means that if not for this formula change, they would have lost an AP. So this formula is maintaining the AP that they currently have. So as long as that enrollment and/or FRM stays the same, it would be in perpetuity. If, if they continue to decline, then that could change.
I guess that's the question-
Dr. Anderson, can I put you on a-
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. And so, Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, and I appreciate, I know a few of us were firing questions at you. At all time of night, Dr. Anderson and I somehow had the exact same moment, the exact same question. So thank you for also sorting through all of that, the duplicates and all of that. A few things I just wanted to mention, and I had sent these to my colleagues just as a, hey, here's what's on my brain as we enter into this process. And I do just want to address the ECAT thing, Dr. Brabran, with you. I, I, I know, I know you don't mean it in a way of, I appreciate you saying that people should feel free to come speak to us. I guess the one thing that I would say back to you, in response to you saying you spoke to department heads, is I think maybe this highlights one of those areas where ECAT does not have a specific person. And so then that chain of being able to then relay that to Dr. Boyd. So I, I totally understand you did not mean that with any sort of, but I just wanted to say, maybe that in itself is evidentiary of, of something.
No, here's a nugget, here's a nugget. When I, when I, when I came back here, there were years of cuts, year after year. The leadership team didn't even know about a budget process to ask for what we were going to add. I'm just being real, no one, there was no, there was, there was actually a public group that was, here's this list. I inherited this list of, here's more things you need to look at cutting. And I said, we need to go in a different direction. And, you know, we had a very successful two years of fully funded budgets for the first time in 20 years before the pandemic, and I think we're about to get fully funded budget number three. But, so we started to create a leadership team needs assessment by department, and they would meet with senior leadership and review their needs. The, the pandemic paused it, and then we did an expedited version of it this year, because we were still kind of in the pandemic, it was hard. I think one of the things I'm looking at leaving for the next superintendent, and working with Mr. Smith and Ms. Burden, is to identify those budget liaisons within the departments to lift up, to make sure all the areas get touched, right? Because I think the call goes out, but some hear it or some don't, it may be a conversation versus how things get submitted, right? We did get a list, I did get a list, and Ms. Burden put it in a list of the budget item, the reference to the strategic plan, the description of the item, and the, the amount. And then we reviewed it at Cabinet, all of them at Cabinet. So I think it's a process that still needs to be refined, because we are missing some voices, not intentionally. And we want those voices, but that's something that, you know, I think we're going to leave and try to continuously improve on moving forward.
Well, and I think maybe another piece of that is like the programmatic piece of, if you've seen a huge uptake in enrollment in something, what does that trigger? And even if it's a temporary, even if it's a conversation, oh, we really think this is COVID time-bound, that this is not a real 47% increase, let's figure out some temporary staffing or whatever to, to hit it. So maybe there's some indicators, warning lights that could go off to you as well, and not rely on one person to remember to respond to the right email.
Right. And your other nugget there is, not all of our budget FTEs are enrollment-driven. Some of our non-enrollment-driven departments, in the middle of this crazy pandemic, have had this excessive workload. And it's trying to figure that out, not to over-correct for it, because then, right, we over-hire, but to deal with the workload that's straining, and certainly that early childhood assessment, those, their demands have been real, like many other departments in the last two years especially. So we're definitely having Dr. Boyd review it, and we'll have something before your final vote in May.
Thank you, I so appreciate that. My, my first two questions I mentioned during our last half, which is just checking the SOQ to see about the alignment of the full-time librarian at Burke Quander and Cedar Lane, and then the library clerical position for middle school and high school. And I know I see that you have more clerical, but, but at least in the copy of the SOQ I have, it does say there's supposed to be a librarian cleric in. The other two, and the conversations that Carl and I were having around the living wage, which is roughly somewhere right now in the neighborhood of $40,000, I think we'd definitely be willing to have those conversations as a follow-on, like a plan how-to, which I know is what you guys did when you got them to 30. So we're fine to model that, but just figuring that out together. And the other is, and you and I've had some of these conversations about adding a Step 24, or some ideas which you and Mr. Smith alluded to, how do we recognize longevity in this system and really raise it up and support it?
Yeah, I, I know Alice wants to answer two specific questions. Let me just say on the county wage, or I mean, the living wage, I'd really like to work on that in partnership with the county. We were getting closer to being with the county. If you remember, we were actually a little bit behind. We were catching up, I think briefly, we got almost there. And I think, much like JET, I'd like to see this as work that we start to bake in collaboration about the living wage between schools and the county, to the degree that the, the board believes that. I think that's the best way to go moving forward. And it really bakes in the support between your body and the Board of Supervisors, that these are funds spent on the right thing. So we can work on that. And let me let Alice, Ms. Wiggington, answer some additional questions that you had asked.
So Ms. Cohen, I, we will certainly look at that SOQ to your specific questions about the library assistant. But I did want to provide some clarification, which we are including in the response to the budget question that you had posed about the librarians that are at Quander, Cedar, and Burke. Burke currently has a budgeted 1.0 librarian. Quander and Cedar both have a .5 budgeted librarian. Cedar did trade for an additional half, so they do have one full. So I just wanted to provide that clarification to you, that Burke, at least of the three, does have a 1.0 budgeted librarian, and it's filled with a person there.
Okay, no, I thought that that, I thought that Debbie Strayhorn had traded for that other half. So I, I didn't know that it was budgeted at one. Okay. Nope, that, that's, hey, that's one off the list, that's great. The other question that I was going to ask too, and I look forward to hearing some more about it, but the conversation that we had around conversion of some of these facilities at Burke School, Key and Kelmer specifically, about that not being just further help in making sure, is that a follow-on here? Is that a follow-on? So I really appreciate, or Ms. Burden appreciated your guidance in trying to figure out where that lives. So, thank you. I know I'm out of time, sorry.
You want to respond to any of that? Okay. Ms. Maron, followed by Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay, I just want to reiterate the excitement over the investment in literacy and professional development, and especially just to be sure that the professional development also includes the communications to staff about, you know, what this is all about, as well as how to do the, the changes to implement science of reading with more fidelity. I had wanted to bring an amendment around funding a Get to Green specialist, because after talking with the staff in the Get to Green office, that was really one of the small things that, budget-wise, that could make a big difference. But I'm really excited, because I know some of our colleagues are working on a grand vision for JET and CIP, the, the capital improvement plan and the budget, so I will just stay tuned for that. But I had also asked about getting, ensuring there was an outdoor space in every single school. That was a budget question I had submitted that would also get subsumed from the CIP work, as well as comm spaces and places to just, you know, chill. And making a comeback is something I believe I put up in the first CIP I was on, which was the vestibules for some of our schools that don't have those entryway vestibules that help as a security matter. And that was something I'd worked with Mr. Plattenberg at the time to cost out. But so it looks like all of those things could come into this grand CIP budget environmental, you know, dream, dream amendment. So I'm excited for, for those things. Regarding safe routes to school, you know, this is something I've talked with Supervisor Walter Alcorn quite a bit, and he has expressed support for finding some funds from the county for that. So I'd love us to explore that option, since that's a federal allocation that's going away. I absolutely support the IA, our instructional aids, the living wage, and the additional step for our staff. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Fresh's point about understanding where all, you know, where all the dollars really are so we could see about allocating. You know, I, I admire our adult education program, however, I did get in the mail, you know, the mailing. And so we have, you know, jobs like health and medical courses, great, totally aligned with our career, you know, planning. And then there's like, things like world cinema and flowers and, you know, I don't, I asked a budget question about it, and maybe these are good ways to engage our community, but like, when we're talking about teaching kids to read, versus, you know, how marginal is that benefit? And I don't know that answer yet, but is this a million dollars? Well, that's a lot of money that could go to any one of our priorities. Similarly, I did ask a budget question that was pretty complex, that did get answered. So I hope, colleagues, that you'll look at it, and members of the public. It was about what it would take to provide equitable world language instruction in all of our elementary schools. Because we learned in the program audit last year that half of our elementary schools do not have world language instruction. And of those half that do, some are immersion, and some are like an hour a week. So, I mean, this, this prices up, this gets to that, that planning that we can do and say, if we want- So, I mean, this, this prices up, this gets to that, that planning that we can do and say, if we want world language instruction in all of our schools, it's going to take this money. Now let's go find it and figure out what is going to, you know, provide this level of benefit. So I look forward to the rest of the budget questions, but I just wanted to share that with my, my colleagues.
Can I ask a clarification? Are you asking the superintendent to, um, are you trying to get consensus on the board regarding your advocacy for the world languages or?
Thank you for asking, excuse me, sorry. I, I am not. I just wanted to know because this would be a big thing to plan for and I wanted to have the data.
That's why I was asking is whether or not we needed that on that extra list and I think it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And then one additional question, just a clarification for both you and Ms. Cohen. And I think it actually requires, um, unfortunately, Dr. Boyd to be here, which is the conversion of rooms into calm rooms and sensory rooms at, uh, the alternative schools. It's my understanding that when we did the work on restraint and seclusion, those rooms were supposed to be converted. Did they not get converted? Is that what you're saying? They did not? So the question is, are they in the queue to be converted or do we need something more specific? Because when we did that work, that was supposed to have occurred.
Well, and just to clarify, mine was more, um, for general education use, whether that be just a meditation space or space for reflection or just to take a break.
So, but two separate questions?
Yes, they're different things.
I don't know, I don't know if somebody else wants to answer it. Maybe Mr. Plattenberg is better poised than I am, but, um, no, that didn't happen. He's on the, um, screen. You know, that, that, that didn't happen. So I know that those schools are, you know, looking forward to change, to doing that. The question with Ms. Burden was that since maybe it doesn't belong in the CIP because it's not a bonded piece, so then do we do it as a follow-on to this budget because it's part and parcel of something we've already committed to? But where are the dollars living? So I think we're all still trying to sort through that.
Mr. Plattenberg, do you want to respond? Because I know that we've had these conversations in the past.
Yes, I mean, we have, but it's still a matter of funding. Um, the bottom line is the $15 million for those security vestibules had been identified previously. And, um, throughout the budgetary process, there has not been funding that's been set aside.
We'll add that to the list of follow-ups because I think we're not talking about the vestibules here. We're talking about another piece. Okay, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. Um, I want to pick up on something that Mr. Frisch said and, and others about what we do with our budgets every year. It, it is my, my extreme concern that the way these boards every year get targeted and focused on is maybe where there's some new money to consider, you know, a little bit, a little tiny snapshot of maybe some of the new positions. But we, we only see a fraction of the information. And Dr. Braybran, one thing I think could really help us as a board, help you with the team, is like this presentation today, it doesn't put the information at our fingertips for all of us to talk together. So I would say for every line item where you want to put in a couple million dollars to as high as $32 million, you guys have got to put in the appendix, here's the page, here's where the, the details are related to it. Because, I mean, we're, I'm looking at a 200-page proposed budget. It doesn't even align with the, maybe the, the line item that you guys have in the overview. And it just seems like we're kind of in this, you know, Easter egg hunt, trying to find thing that, you know, the eggs of information. And so, um, my other question has to do with the 32 million for the professional development. Unless there's some other place, when I looked, I could find one sentence to describe the 32 million. I mean, I, I hope all of my colleagues can agree, we cannot take a single one sentence and decide, well, that's a compelling argument to spend $32 million, which is more than half of a step. And our employees have told us, all of them who've lost out on steps for multiple years, that we're just going to take $32 million and like that, spend it in three days. Now, professional development is crucial. Our literacy plan that we're rolling out is crucial. But no one's shown us how are we using our current 14 days? And so I, I think of that, I haven't heard really any advocacy on middle school start times from Dr. Braybran and his team. And that's something that our, again, our prior board, when we put through high school start times, we broke our hearts to tell our families, we're going to have to put middle school on hold. Well, $32 million is going to be more than enough money to solve that problem. And if we say we put students at the center of all of our work and we know that sleep and circadian rhythm is crucial for them to show up and be ready to learn, then I think it still remains one of our most strategic and important investments to consider. And I would like from now until we pass in May, that that becomes a forefront of focus as well. You know, and unfortunately with seven seconds left, I'll just end up needing a go back. But yes, it's a good news budget, but have we brought our 12 important and strategic minds to this work with staff? Not yet, but I hope so, because this is the year, you guys, to be a game changer in the right direction.
Thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. Just a couple of things. You know, the, the line item and doing the reference to the appendix, that's some good feedback, I think, you know, to talk about how to do that. That 32 million, we have heard from board members, hey, those three days, we know PD's important, but we really need a more detailed plan. And we are going to bring one before May, before you sign on the dotted line. And on that slide, on this one issue of elementary planning time, to talk about how some reallocation within that 32 million to deal with elementary planning time. I'm not ready today, want to withstand all the board questions, but I am doing some work on it. Remember, we have to prepare a budget back in the fall, in October, November, December, right? To get to my sharing it in January. And so there are a lot of variables in the air, but we certainly have recognized we need to show you how the professional development with the 14 existing days and the three would work for both instructional and our operational staff. The middle school start times, uh, you know, that is something we know is, is, is a priority of many of the board members. And i- if I'm just being as honest as I think I've always tried to be, the, the bandwidth to do all the moving pieces, including community engagement and logistical changes, I, I still think it's hard to just explain how we, I, I, as a leader, I think I'm an optimistic, positive guy, but there have been still major periods of this year, people are just trying to get to the next day and week. And engaging in some of that work, um, is just a tremendous amount of work to do, middle school start times. You know, maybe, maybe it's a pile in a few places, but to do the, 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 the ability to do it across the entire system is a tremendous load of work for us to do. And we're trying to get back to that normal operational place and I just don't think we're there. I don't know, Mr. Smith, if you'd have anything else about middle school start times or Mr. Plattenberg? That's, that's just, that's my best.
You're right in terms of culture change. And one of the biggest costs associated with middle school start times is, of course, drivers. And as we look at our current environment around our inability to, uh, be able to hire drivers, we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we would, uh, at this point, make changes to middle school start times without the ability to hire the drivers to actually drive the runs.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Smith is spot on regarding the challenges with the drivers, as you all are aware. But when we look at, um, some of the different scenarios where we tried to minimize the cost or the impact, they really touched on some cultural issues in the community that were considered a third rails, like starting elementary schools, um, where students would have to go for simple twilight or impacting athletics in the afternoon. Because we looked at this and we looked at it in a, in a number of different veins. But, but, um, anyway, there are a lot of challenges with that.
And to reiterate that, that middle school start times is important for this board. It's important for this community. And in terms of, as, for this being the right time to do that, uh, I, I don't believe that it is the right time, but it doesn't mean that it's not going to be considered and not going to go back to the community so that we can bring something back to this board.
Excellent. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Okay, well, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to start these conversations and to really talk about what the rationale is. And so a lot of my comments have to do with hopefully having those conversations earlier because I know sometimes we get up against that date and then all of a sudden we have to scramble. So I want to start with, I know there's advocacy in the community. Um, one of our, um, associations has come out with concerns about, um, not having had raises for people that are at the top of the scale. And so, Dr. Braybran, I'm kind of agnostic on this at this point. What I would like to avoid is a conversation later down the road, right? And, and I'd like to have transparency on that issue so that whatever we end up doing, it's justified, supported by the data. And this board has had an opportunity to really discuss it. Staff has had an opportunity to explore it. So everybody understands and, you know, we, we do things, I think, in an orderly way. So that's the first thing I wanted to.
Let me just say on that, that, um, Mr. Smith's pulling together a work group with our transportation folks, who I think are the folks that have expressed concerns about that salary.
Or teachers as well.
Yeah, on teachers.
Yeah, it's not just transportation people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perhaps one of the things too, and we don't have to decide it today, before we get to, because I think this is the other thing, May's the adopted and we'll have the, we have the meetings, that's already on the calendar. I think we need to work with the chair and vice chair and pick some time. It's not, uh, two weeks from now, when you're doing the advertised is too soon. Something between now and May, like a middle marker, we can bring an update. We can get an update of where we think the state, um, general assemblies picture is. And so the numbers, the, 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 these areas of focus can come in and we can get a tighter game plan of what the priorities are. Or even like Carl said, hey, here's what we can do with new money. You've got these other things, we've costed out, here's how much more. And we can talk about whether to offer, here's what you'd have to cut potentially to get those and do something like that prior to May, right? Sometime in that late March or early April, that still gives the board plenty of time in the community to think about it before you have to take the vote in, in later May.
If, if I may suggest, I mean, I certainly, you know, I'm, I'm just one board member, but it would be great, I think, if you came back to us and said, this is what we garnered from this conversation. This is what we propose to look at and this is the date by which we will get back to you. That's, that's just me, that's just a suggestion from, from one.
Sure.
One, one person. One of the things that was mentioned this morning that I think is, um, you know, perhaps should be included in that list of things that you're considering, uh, had to do with Title I schools and, um, how we're noting that a lot, we have many more, um, less experienced employees there, et cetera. If there's anything budgetary wise that we can do to address that, I would say that's something we want to have enough time to discuss, right? Is, you know, as some of our board members have brought up here, you know, when we see big numbers or we see problems that we suddenly try to tackle. I just want us to be able to have these congenial, uh, conversations that we can in, in a very, using all of our critical thinking skills because I think that's, um, we can do really, really great work. Along that same line, um, along that same line, um, I have heard quite a bit about, you know, coming back this year and increased problems with behavior with our students and discipline issues and things of that nature. And so I, I am one board member who would like to see us look at what we can do. I know we have some ESSR funding that may be happening now. We know that won't be there forever. So if we can have some long-range planning to address that type of problem, I would really love to do that. So I agree with my colleagues with respect to reviewing, oh, is my time up? I'll ask for a follow-up for my last, uh, point, but I just wanted to raise those three things to be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I don't have any new, um, placards up, but I believe, oh, Ms. Ke- Darinak Kofax.
I'm sorry, I had to step out a few times. But I, I, I want to say, I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I just asked, um, Ms. T- my colleague, Ms. Tolan, about the pre-K advocacy. She said Ms. Boyd will be bringing something to us on that. I think, um, Scott, when we were originally talking about the calendar, there was also a leg that you briefly brought to us about, um, the middle school start times. And, uh, you know, it was like you, Jeff, Mr. Plattenberg said, um, it was not the best. There were lots, there were lots of bumps as far as what the community, we believe the community would. So, but if we could, Mr. Plattenberg, would we be able to get, um, I, I, I understand all of the things Mr. Smith spoke about, but could we just get, um, and if this wasn't already, if it was already asked, I apologize, estimate if we were to do it, um, as a standalone without, with keeping, meaning, keeping, you know, elementary and high schools the same? Could we get it, could we get an estimate on that? Even if we're not even going to institute it this year?
Yes, and I believe, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Plattenberg.
I, I was just going to say what you had said, that we had, uh, initially provided some general framework on what that would, what that would entail, what that would cost. And we can go ahead and revise that and, and provide what that would, would mean. I think Mr. Smith has some more detail on that.
No, it's fine, Mr. Plattenberg. We've provided some information to the board and we can update that based on today's dollars and give you.
Yeah, and if it should just be part of our budget questions, I, you know, I, I would appreciate that.
Certainly.
I think, or however you can get it to us quickest, if you could just give, send us an email or if you want to do budget questions. I don't, I, I don't have a. Well, right, right, that's what he, yeah. So, and then finally, I'm just, just to share with some colleagues. I'm the AIPAC representative and we've been here, you know, while we are so excited to be in the second year of our, getting our advanced academic resource teachers. We're also looking to, you know, make the young scholars have more continuity in the young scholars program. And one thing that was probably be a small ask, but we need robotic kits for schools. They, they're, you know, lots of times that's funded by PTA. So I'm going to have a question about that. Robotic kits and another type of science kit that they have been asking for because we have not had that. So, um, let me get the name of it specifically. Hands-on equation kits as well as robotic kits. So I will be looking and adding that as a budget question. And, um, I, I, with my 30 seconds, I want to, um, circle back to the point I made earlier today. I feel, and, and I do understand, Dr. Braybran and your whole team, how difficult these last two years have been and we're finally seeing, uh, you know, we hope light at the end of the tunnel. But this, it, this is why a strategic focus is so important. Because right now I feel a little bit like we are back at where we were a few years ago, throwing things up at the wall, seeing what, not, 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 seeing what will stick. No, you know, no, um, and, um, because of that, then it becomes, it becomes my priorities more important than you, I'm going to rally. That's not the way this budget should be. It should be holistic. It should be, um, everyone coming together and not who can rally the troops. And because that's destructive in the end. That is so destructive. I've seen it happen before. We went against that. This is a good news budget, but I, I'm saying to my colleagues, please, let's work together and not be this, like, my priorities more important, I've got seven votes. That will destroy this process.
Since this is my last budget, I will say this. You all did a great resolution in the fall, led by the budget chair and vice chair, to reflect the priorities that are in this budget. This budget, I didn't just come from nothing and it's good. Again, just being honest with, with four months to go, this additional step of the, the, the proposed by the superintendent, then the advertised, then the adopted. Not every school district in America has this middle step. And what it does is create another dynamic to have another go at it, if you will, on our. process, which I think creates more work for the board, more work for the administration, and really a second spring process that takes the fall. And it's twice the amount of work. Certainly, I don't know any other district in Virginia that does this extra step. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, and I have not asked ERS or anybody else to find out. But it starts a set of dynamics, even when well intentioned, that get us back into having to redo a process that we really already started with. Of course, we're going to make tweaks. I mean, I, I get that. But it almost feels like we reset it and then it's all over again between now and May. And I think that's just something to think about for the future. I do believe, if we look, go back and look at that resolution and those topics, they are rooted in our strategic plan. But I do, but, but I do agree with that when we get to this level, the dynamic becomes, other things can come in and maybe we can lose track. I hope that we won't, and that's why I hope overall that we look at a follow on that lets us go back and more thoughtfully bring you between now and May, how this can align with the strategic plan and where we think we'll be in terms of our parameters of the budget. And maybe, as Carl said, what are these things, hey, it's past what we have in new money. And if you want to get all these other things that are talked about, here are some offsets. Are you willing to take any of these off for, for some of this new that we can work on you guys, with you all to do? But I appreciate that feedback.
If I could go back to a previous amendment that you were talking about, Ms. Darinak Kofax, around robotics kits, if you wouldn't mind working with me offline, because I'd like to find out which schools and questions so that we can work very closely with those principals to possibly help them identify those funds in their current budgets so that we don't see that as an amendment. But we would certainly.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Just trying to get people what they need. So that's what I'm hearing from some of my constituents and some people. And it's important, you know, as we move forward to, as we move forward in this process to have that.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak Kofax. I appreciate it. Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. And I'm happy to follow, Ms. Darinak Kofax. Having been on the other side of developing budgets for a number of years, I think that strategic view is so important because even as a staff member, like the budget process starts, you know, back at the program managers and the, you know, if we feed everything into the coordinators and then it just keeps coming up. Without that strategic view of what's important and where we're headed, I mean, that staff people need that direction as well. And, you know, what, what should we be cutting out of our budgets? Should, what programs do we need to change, et cetera? So, you know, I appreciate that set of comments and we'll be happy to work on trying to figure out how we can do that and just, and feed it all the way down. Dr. Braybrand, I want to thank you for, and, you know, our budget staff for really thinking about and hearing the things that I have been coming up since the, you know, original advertised budget came out, some of these big picture items and, you know, putting those on that list and, you know, taking those back for some additional consideration along with some of the other things that have been coming up here today. I think that will be super helpful for, you know, for us to make decisions that are, you know, grounded in information and data. And, and prioritization coming from staff on, you know, if we want to accomplish some of these things, what are the priorities? Instead of, you know, Jet is a prime example. We have a big, long laundry list. And I want to thank Mr. Plattenberg and his staff for working very closely with us on sort of big picture view. We've been working and talking on Safe Routes to School and Get to Green. So ISD has been involved as well, looking big picture on how do we meet some of these goals. But we've got a big list. And so we need to go back and prioritize that and be really strategic about how we will look at this over the years. And that's just one example. The only other thing I wanted to mention that has not come up yet today, I know our student representative has been advocating for years already for Sosa's in middle school. So I'm just, you know, throwing that out there too. I think my colleague Karen Corbett Sanders already has a budget question in, on that one. So thank you to my colleagues for all of the input. And, you know, we'll look forward to pulling this all together. And I'm taking copious notes on what everyone's saying.
And we have Ms. Sizemore Heiser put up her plaque right after here.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't have a lot to add. I know Ms. Cohen talked about some of the things I was going to speak to. And I just wanted to, as I'm listening to you all, I think to Ms. Darinak Kofax's point, right, I very much agree with what you said. And, and same with you, Ms. Tolan, about being strategic and prioritizing. And I, I think what's, what I feel like is happening in some ways is, you know, this, this iteration of this board hasn't had a chance to really dive deep into that strategic plan. Understandably, and we've talked about it, Dr. Braybrand. And so I think the further we get, further down the road we get, where we haven't been able to really dive into that strategic plan, the harder it is for this board to be strategic and prioritize, right? I think we, I think the previous iteration of the board did a wonderful job with the strategic plan. And I think, Ms. Darinak Kofax, you talked earlier about the process of doing it. And I think it's, it's great. It just doesn't feel like it's owned by this iteration of the board. And that, I think, is where we're getting to. So now, I think we're at the point where there's like jet goals, like, you know, the ECAT stuff that comes up, where we're, things are coming up that are all, middle school start times, I mean, many, many other things, you know, Sosa's. And, and we're sort of, I feel I should say, we're sort of trying to figure out how to prioritize and trying to figure out how to strategize, whether it's this year or multi-year, or maybe this is now and this is next year, in a little bit of a vacuum. And so I don't know the answer to that because we're still dealing with COVID, but I think this is what's the results of that. And so I think going forward, as we have, working with, with, you know, new superintendent, sitting down and thinking out, how do we plot out a timeline and a budget plan that allows for staff to do that prioritization with the strategic plan, that allows for that explanation to come through, that allows for the board to have the time to dive into it and do the talking about prioritizations? Then when we get to this point, I think as a body, perhaps, I feel like there's an understanding of how all of these different things tie into what we've already kind of come to consensus on as a body. That's not a short term solution, but that's kind of what I'm feeling, hearing all this. And I know our Budget Chair and Vice Chair have done a great job trying to put, put a process together. And we had our follow on motions from before, but I even feel like those follow on motions were done without the pre-work of, of this body trying to figure out that strategic plan. So nothing much to do with that. I just wanted to put out, I think that's the tension you're seeing.
So Ms. Sizemore Heiser, you're absolutely right, that it's really hard for somebody to take over somebody else's plan and make it their own without having the opportunity to dig into it in more detail. Unfortunately, COVID got in the way, I believe. Having said that, I'm, I'm listening and I know, as is Ms. Tolan, and we will, this is a personal commitment, we'll come back to you with suggested changes to our budgetary process. This year, we thought we got there by setting our priorities in a resolution. But I, I really welcomed and heard what people are saying around the table about having a bit more consultation and dialogue in the development of that resolution. This year was the first year we did a resolution. Maybe next year, what we do is we do that, we do a draft and then have a work session on that resolution before we hand it over to the superintendent instead of doing it at the board table. So there, there are some, you know, we're, we're always talking about continuous process improvement. And I hope that that's something that we as a board can also improve our own processes. And that would be one area I think we can work on making recommendations.
Just super quick on something to say. We had a strategic plan that the prior superintendent made. I came in, the board didn't want to change it. We just narrowed our focus. The board still owned that plan. You all were aboard for three months. We were actually doing the strategic plan, I think, at the very last work session that we had in person. And there was discussion, it's time to really redo it. I think I remember Carl going, hey, we want you to take a fresh look. Boom, it's two years later. As I think about you all doing the new superintendent search, I encourage you next year, as you look at your board year, that the strategic plan and the budget dominate next year because this close alignment to what is the plan you want. And then that'll answer your priorities. The strategic plan will answer the priorities. And then it will be able to be reflected in the budget. And you'll have ownership of both. And you'll have a new superintendent who can assess what she or he thinks has gone well in the system and what is still lacking to be refined. I do just want to leave you all, though, and the community with the existing strategic plan that we've had. We have worked to follow that up through here and including in this budget. Some of these things are longstanding strategic commitments that we're in the process of year two or year three of finishing. I do think when we get to this point in the process, it's these other pieces that are still not quite under the, the tree or, you know, on the Thanksgiving table or whatever another analogy, the cornucopia of things. I'm trying to be inclusive. I am a, I'm working on it still, trying to, what those would be. But, and it's not taking too much time to actually start over and say, we've got a good budget process. We do still, you're killing me. And we just need to tweak, we just need to tweak and leave some time for us perhaps to get those refinements between now and May.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I'm going to let Ms. Pekarsky speak now.
I think he wants to press rewind on that.
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. Please, Ms. Sizemore Heiser finish and then we'll go to Ms. Parkett.
I just want to say first, I very much appreciate the budget process. And I think I mentioned the resolution, kind of bringing that forward. And I think it's, I was just trying to think of even before, I think Dr. Braybrand hit it about the strategic plan and then going into that. And we can still have a conversation about how we take our plan and prioritize our budget around it. So I very much appreciate the work you've done this year. And same, Dr. Braybrand, I understand that it was a circumstance of, you know, circumstance. I'm just saying, I think that's, I think we're seeing a moment where that's something we need to start reprioritizing.
Ms. Pekarsky.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. It's always fun here at the board table. Just quickly, because this has come up. Now, after our staffing presentation in regards to maybe less, newer teachers in, in some of our higher poverty schools, can you tell me exactly in detail, what do we do now in terms of mentorship for our new teachers? What does Great Beginnings look like?
Yeah, we don't have Kathleen Waltz with us who would give just the A answer. And Dr. Presidio, it looks like, do you want to go with that? But we do have a robust program for it. And Dr. Presidio, you want to share a couple of things?
Now that you lowered the standard below an A, I mean, sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to give it a try. Well, I don't know if I have a B answer either. But, you know, it's, it's a multifaceted program. It starts with, you know, basically an extended week in the summer of intensive support, both around classroom management issues as well as content and curriculum support. And then it's continued with work that happens throughout the school year. So they get additional coaching and support, both from a mentor in their school as well as external coaching and support and professional development. So it's a year long program, involves a number of different components.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering, if we still have that mentorship component of.
And it's actually a multi-year program.
Right, right. Okay. Maybe that can be a follow on to kind of get a, a better understanding of that since there has been some interest. I think that would be helpful. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Pekarsky. Now I have Dr. Anderson for a go back. I'm going to, before we go to go backs, get a time check from my colleagues. We were supposed to go till four. Can I suggest we go till 4:30, given that we started a bit late? And if we're going to go to 4:30, we'll give one and a half minutes, or two minutes per go back. Can I get a show of hands that they support going till 4:30? I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Ms. Marin.
There are no objections.
Okay, let's move on to 4:30. Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I'll just run down my list for things for your consideration because I did not get a chance to do that last time. Same thing with early childhood, the assessment team, that's up there. That's something I want to have more about. I do want to continue to pursue the IA subpay. We talked about that because that was something that I wanted to ensure was not going to be problematic based on compensation. But now that you've made that change, I understand from Mr. McDonald, when he sent us that very detailed list, that that continues to be an area of concern in terms of coverage. So that's one of my things. And mentor teachers is one that I did have in, in light of this conversation that you all have had. But I have a very specific caveat and I not, I have not submitted my question yet. But it's mentor teachers for special, for new special education teachers particularly. I understand this had been, there were eight that supported the division and that was taken out many, many years ago and never returned. And I, I bring this in the same vein that I did the other pieces, which is my teachers in Mason District who are brand new special education, brand new special education teachers who we're desperately trying to hold on to, they haven't enough support in order to do this job. So I want to revisit that part of the conversation. And I need to detail this out a little bit more, but ACE, I think somebody else brought it up, they, you know, are struggling a little bit because of the pandemic impact to their enrollment. They're not able to be self-sustaining in the way that I think we would like them to be. So I do want to have some conversations, Ms. Burden, about what that could look like in terms of some additional supports. And I do want to throw my support behind what Ms. Keys-Gamar said in light of this, this discussion earlier. If you can think of some ways, because I was going to list this as a follow on, some ways to, one, include mobility as part of our needs base because we know has significant impact. And you've already done this work a little bit with Fort Belvoir. And two, determine how to recruit more experienced staff in our high poverty schools because it's important. We have to find some other means to advance their progress and to close the gaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. We have taken notes. Do you want to respond at all, Dr. Braybrand, or are you?
I think I'm good. One thing real quick, new teachers of Ms. Waltz was here, Dr. Waltz was here. We did start to have a special education track as part of Great Beginnings two or three years ago. I don't know about the mentor resource, eight teachers from 10 years ago. I'll have to check on that. But we did start to do new teachers, a special track for special ed. And we can, when we do an update on all of our new teacher and mentoring supports, can bring that as well. I wrote down the rest of the things you said.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
I'm going to do it in the reverse order of Dr. Anderson. Now I'm going to go to the things I really love in this one. The accessibility specialist, can somebody talk a little bit more about that?
Dr. Presidio, is accessibility specialist under? Dr. Boyd, probably. And I don't know if she's with us this afternoon.
I can just reach out to her separately. That's all right.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that information for the board if, if you'd like, or a budget question on the job description of the position, if you'd like.
That'd be great. The next is recruitment, the money from HR. Is that in TAM? And how many positions are we recommending in TAM?
It is in HR, the HR staffing. I think it's nine positions. It is two recruitment specialists, one employment specialist, one coordinator for the sub office, one domain architect, one benefits manager, one compensation specialist, one ADA coordinator, and one equity and employee relations investigator. It's on page 41.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I was really pleased to see, I know Ms. Tolan echoes it, the space utilization person from facilities and planning. We were so psyched about this in 2020 and then it all fell apart. And then the transportation compensation, you mentioned that you're going to bring it to us before the May vote. I know we're all going to get emails about this, courtesy of Mr. Swan, the second we step out of here. So do you mind doing a little bit deeper dive of, of how you envision that, what, what that might look like and how you're translating it to kind of the dollar amount that you're holding as a placeholder?
So we're, we shared with the board at a previous work session that we were going to pull this work session together. And I actually have a meeting with my HR team on Thursday to identify the individuals to pull together for that work group. And really, we were looking at a variety of ways to address transportation compensation. We know that through the budget or through the calendar process, there were some questions about workdays and days of training for drivers, non-paid workdays. We also know that there were some questions about how we might address drivers who are at the top of the scale. So rather than. So rather than have, you know, a narrow list of ideas, we really want to bring people together to talk about many of the issues that might be facing our transportation folks and then prioritize that work with clearly a recommendation around some of the things that we talked about upfront. And then if there's anything else that comes out of that group, then we would certainly bring that back to the board as well.
Sure, and I would just encourage that information that we had about comparing the salary scales in the neighboring localities where we had a few that were just big, big gaps, weird middle time and where we are kind of, what, an assessment of where we're losing drivers to.
Yeah, we've got those salary scales. We also have, even within our current bus orbits, we have two salary pay plans and so looking at the possibility of collapsing that so that we're all on the same pay plan. Those are all things that we will talk about and address with the group.
And you anticipate that that will turn into some sort of budget ask, is my question?
There most likely will be some kind of budgetary impact from that group unless we can all come to the table and identify things that are cost-neutral.
Nice try, Mr. Smith. No, that's great and I appreciate, in the interim, Ms. Corbett Sanders suggested to Mr. Frisch and I to take that living wage conversation to the county and try to get a larger conversation about that. So I really, I appreciate that guidance and we'll get to work on it.
My suggestion is we do it as a follow-on motion to our budget, advertised budget and send it over that way and then you guys have a, have the full support of the board. And with that, we are going to go to Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Let's see, speed talking. The ECAT thing, Dr. Braybrand, this is something that I've worked with your team and Ms., the predecessor to Dr. Boyd, Ms. Johnson and her team, you know, between ECAT, our speech-language pathologist shortages and the caseloads they're dealing with, I mean, I'm just being really mindful here, you guys, that it really isn't our job to start coming and lobbying what our frontline staff are telling us. And so, Dr. Braybrand, I can't emphasize enough, I know you have a short time with us, but I hope you and your team will have some serious conversations because we will have new person coming on board. If the frontline people who are serving our kids that we say are the most important thing can't get their voices up through your team, it's a problem. And this is not one that just surfaced this year. And frankly, some of them, when I've been talking to them, I finally have said, I don't know what else to tell you, I don't know why, because I've connected you with Ms. Johnson and her team before, so we've got to get better at this. It's, I know you don't want it to look this way, we don't want it to look this way, but at some point, staff don't have any other choice than to come through the board. The tradition of the superintendent presents a budget in early January. We vote typically, it was the second week in February because we had to, had to get it to the county executive who had to examine it, fold it into his proposal and bring it to the board supervisors. Now, for the first time that I've ever remembered, we're going to pass this after the county executive presents, you know, his proposal to the board supervisors. So technically, this rush, you guys, to vote on February 24th or whatever it is, is kind of really not, it's arbitrary at this point because they're now, apparently they're going to take it and look at it, but he's allocating, we's allocating. And so I just, I'm looking at this thing and my closing comment is, on page 41, the high school assistant principals getting their 12-month contracts converted from 11 months. There's no detail in there that tells us how many assistant principals are we talking about? And from a transparency standpoint, look right above on the line item before it, on HR staffing supports, staff tells us. So I just, there are things that I really struggle, that I'm supposed to get behind the hard work your team has done, but the lack of information, you know, a million dollars here and a million dollars there, it all adds up to the $3 billion and, you know, you and I can talk more, but I'm really struggling with some of the information I'm being asked to fund that's new and I feel like we need more information than us burying Lee and her team with 25 to 50 budget questions.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Braybrand, do you want to respond? And I know we've had conversations about the timing with Ms. Burden as well.
No, I think I'm good. I agree with her about the issue. I mean, that's what I was saying earlier. I think a follow-on omnibus versus trying to make a decision on whose amendment gets tacked on in the next two weeks versus let's spend more time and find time at chairs to look at some time in March or April for another work session to solidify where we ultimately are and get you some more of the detail that you want. That's my suggestion. And we don't, we don't even have to do that to ourselves and make this last budget, which is a good news budget in the total amount of revenue that we're talking about from both local and state. Overall, again, we're waiting to see if the general assembly, but so far, the major parts of the budget are holding and standing firm through the Senate and I really do think that the budget proposed by the state is going to stay pretty close. And I continue to have positive dialogue with the county executive around our budget process, so I think we give ourselves a little bit of the gift of time and some additional discussion here in the spring and we can have a smooth May for a final adoption aligned with strategic goals and maybe some forward-looking to what's next for the next superintendent to come in with this leadership team and really shoot out of this budget into a positive year next year that's solely focused on student success and not on all of these other things we, that have dominated our attention for the last two years.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Burden, did you want to add anything to that? No? Okay, thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamar?
All right. Yeah, just a couple of things. Dr. Braybrand, you said earlier that you asked, I guess, your department heads to take a look, bring forth their suggestions. Were they also reviewing current investments as to, okay, all right. So it would be great, I think, if the board members were kind of, got a little bit of a hint of what some of that thinking was. I mean, if we, if we understood that, I think it would, might short, it might make some of our discussions easier. With respect to, and I was going to bring up mentors, I don't know if there's a way that we can use some of our retired teachers to couple with some of those Title I newer employees. I just throw that out there because I know that's.
That's a good idea. Take a look at it. Yep.
So trying to stay in my lane. Okay, and just with respect to those reviews, Lord, Dr. Braybrand, we're really looking for, Lord, I don't know where I am. Review of the.
What did I miss? Those what? Something under a tree?
You people need to go home. At any rate, as we're looking at these departments, et cetera, I'm always wanting to know, what is the metric we're using, right? To figure out what's working, what isn't working, what additionally we need. So just as you're bringing back additional information, know that that's one of the, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of our go-backs. So I think we've got a fairly large list of things that we want the superintendent to look at. Amongst those is also providing a bit of an update from the superintendent and his staff on what strategic decisions were made in cutting individual pieces already. But there's also a commitment to expand the list of four items on that last, for bringing back to the board a plan on strategic priorities, to include telehealth, translation services, provide greater detail on the SOQs, the library and clerical positions. We also, with Calm Spaces, and what should come out of CIP amendments versus what should, or what should be addressed in our CIP amendments versus the budget amendments. And then in the longer term is start providing more details on how we might get to a middle school start times, beginning with sharing with the board what's already been done in that area and also looking at how we can shore up and better support our novices. And IA subpay, question of the resources ACE may need or not need, which I would hope that they would also include the longer plan, which is to move them into the original Mount Vernon High School. I shared the mobility forum topic with you. They're going to share the mobility study that was done and additional clarifications on individual pages that got listed, for example, page 41. And also in addressing the discussion about the pay, pay changes for our transportation, there's also the question to make sure that there is the recommendations for the, for the parent liaisons and other categories, so it would be a more holistic approach. And then as a follow-on motion for joint work between the boards, I look forward to seeing something from Ms. Cohen and Mr. Frisch on living wage. And with.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Or meeting manager? So are we not capturing this in the next steps since you have that?
I would like you to capture it in next steps, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I heard today from all of you. And certainly, it's actually because it's a budget discussion, forward budget questions to Lee and her team. And with that, I'm going to give you all the gift of time. It's 4:11 and this meeting is adjourned.